Good evening. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Presson?
Here. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, March 7th, 2016.
Okay, I'll move approval.
Motion by Roberts, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jacobson, any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Mr. Jacobson?
Perhaps this is appropriate in the report from the Committee of the Whole. I wonder if we could have a brief update on the progress towards sending us an ordinance or possible, you know, for possible revision on the marijuana fines.
We have a report, but it's, but our attorney is not here this week, so we could give it to you next week.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Petitions and communications. Anybody who would like to address the City Council kindly fill out one of these cards and give it to the clerk. I have four here. Linda Turnbull. And if you could just speak into the microphone, and you have five minutes. And you don't have to take five minutes.
Good evening, this is Ms. Turnbull. I'm Linda Turnbull, as you know, I do a lot of community programs here. I've been with the Park District over thirty years doing a lot of kid programs and a lot of programs in the community. I'm pretty know, pretty sure that you guys are familiar with my name, Linda Turnbull. I'm here this evening because it really worries me that unethical and behavior is going on in our community. And reason why I say that is because I have been experiencing it now for over three years. I've been to Champaign City Council when it first started, and I gave the information to them, and nothing ever was done. And whoever these people are, they are still tormenting me and others. And what I want to say is, I'm here tonight to bring a complaint to your council about unidentified drones that are being used in our community. And that they are stalking, harassing, and terrifying some people. I've been dealing with this issue for some years now. I've been to Champaign City Council, I've spoken with our state senators, and Champaign Chief of Police on this issue. I am now, I am not the only person who has been affecting the drones that are appearing to follow, stalk, and harass me. There are other residents in Urbana who these are affecting also, which some people were too afraid to even come tonight, to even get on the camera. I'm being that torch, hallelujah, because I've been dealing with it for a while, and hallelujah, and some people are to the point where they're terrified to even speak on it, like somebody's gonna do something to them if they say something about it. But when you have a drone that's stalking and following citizens and doing unethical behaviors for is spying on people, looking at people's windows, they could not have no clothes on, all kind of stuff like that, it's not good. It's not good. And what I want to say tonight is, there is a problem here. And it needs to be addressed. And it needs to be researched. And some people need, if they want, visit, a lot of people can visit in Urbana on Beersley and Roamine, and Goodwin and Beersley. If they keep coming by there at night, they'll sooner or later see them, hallelujah, I bet you they will, because they are out there all the time. Hallelujah. And what I want to also say is that the problem is a big problem that's been going on for a while now, and nothing has been done. And these drones are violating people's rights, and privacies are being, codes are being broken. And it's just not right. Besides bringing this complaint to you, I also want to ask to consider passing an ordinance regulating the use of these drones in the city of Urbana, so that people's privacy is respected and their rights are not violated. And that people can be monitored with using this stuff, and using it unethical in a manner that they're not supposed to be, using it for their own personal use. Their own personal use where they're doing stuff to people, hallelujah. And I'm glad I got God in my life, because if I didn't, how many people have this thing ran crazy? You know? I mean, how would you feel if something was doing that to you? And your kids? This one lady was so afraid, her kid sleeps in the room and don't even go by, she got, she has tape all up in her windows, Ms. Powell. And Ms. Hunt, she saw the things follow me, they hide up in the, oh, there's so much craziness. I don't want to, I don't want to put too much on you guys at first, because when you don't know what's going on, it makes it seem like y'all think I'm talking crazy. So I don't want y'all to think I'm talking crazy. I just want you to investigate what I'm talking about. And that, and also you got websites, Black America State of Surveillance?
You have one minute left.
Okay. Also, you got here drones now being used illegally to spy on black communities? You can look here on blackcommunitywebsite.com and find all this information out. And we have it here in Champaign, Urbana, and it's been here for a long time, and nothing's being done about it. That's all I want to say on that. And hopefully, and I pray, that you guys get something done about it.
Would you ask, would you stay for some questions?
Yes.
Do you document when you see these things?
I've been documenting, and what I really need is that expensive camera that Best Buy has, and it's like on sale $600, the camera, and the lens is on sale for $199. Because I did go to Urbana Public TV and try to use their stuff, and it didn't work. I also went to Parkland College and used that one thing where you can look, and it didn't work. And my camera phone is not working, so now I'm looking on some funds where we can get some pictures. Because also Terry Thompson, a well-known activist in this town, has been knowing about it for years, but he's waiting on the pictures.
Okay, thank you.
Hallelujah.
Here's another question, Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah, I guess I have two questions. We don't have attorney here, but maybe this could be passed to him. I don't know, I guess it would be good for us to know the, what legislation there exists in the state and the federal government, and in other municipalities around the country in regulating private drones. I was, I was listening to you, but I was also Googling like drone stalking.
Yeah, but the ones I've been seeing, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but the ones I've been seeing, ain't no Best Buy drones. These are high-tech drones, hallelujah. And I, you know, I'm a grad student from Eastern University, and I did research, I have a master's in, and training and development in technology. And also I've been documenting things and following and watching it. It ain't no little play toy.
Oh, sure, no, and I appreciate that. And, but what I'm trying to, you know, ask for us to work with is what is the current legislative, state of legislation that we can, that we can build on to address this problem? I take your, your point very seriously that it, it's a real problem, these craft have the capabilities to do what you described being done. And, and if we don't have, you know, the appropriate tools to deal with that, then we should, we should, we should do what we can do to get those.
Another big question would be, does Urbana Police Department have drones?
I don't believe they do.
Okay.
Diane?
What time of the day do these show up?
At night, it comes out when it's real dark. In the daytime, they hide under the cloud. And I don't want to give too much information out until we get these people caught, because we give too much information, I can talk to you private without being on TV, because I don't want them to know everything we know, because we want to catch them. Because hallelujah, if somebody, if I tell you that I've been redoing research on certain things they do in the daytime, I can tell you one-on-one, but I don't want to go public with it now, because I want to make sure these people, if it's police or whoever it is, that they get caught, because it's not right to stalk and harass and to terrify people and kids, hallelujah. And they should not be, the law is not above law. You cannot be doing this to people, just like they said here in this one article, drones now being used illegally to spy on black community. I'm just saying, hallelujah, there's a lot of stuff going on that you as City Council needs to be aware, because this is in your city, and it's going on here.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Henry Washington?
Yes, my name is Henry Washington, and I'm here to echo the same sentiment and concern as Anna Rusi just did. I'm at a point now that is affecting me mentally. I find myself, I have a cab business, and I be in my cab, and my patron will notice it too. And so they still following you, they still following you. And I did some little research, and that if I go to the airport, that's the only way I get rid of them. If I go to the airport, they stops, you know? I am a law-abiding citizen, and I don't understand why this is happening to me, why? You know, I, I'm not, I don't consider myself as a, as a terror, a threat to society, so why are you doing this to me? I come home, I have a, have a garage, attached a garage from, from my house, and when I get ready, get out of my car, the drone will follow me all the way. When I get in my house and go to my back door, it'll go there, follow me to the back of my garage, when I turn my lights on at night. And so it's not something that I'm making up, paranoid, dreaming about, this is reality, this is happening. I have contacted the local police, and they tell me to, that I need to talk to the state police. I called the state police, and they tell me I need to talk to the FBI. I talked to someone in the FBI, and they told me, then, like it's a pass in the book thing, they tell me that the, I need to address the issue to the local police. Well, I've already done that, you know? And so he said, well, I'll put it, we'll put it in your, in our database. But, you know, I'm, I'm tired. And something need to be done, something need to be done right away. If I had a, I have a camera, but my camera won't, won't do the, won't be able to reach that far up in the sky. But I have many witnesses, people, I have people that come to my house, ride with me in the car, and they are witness that this is, this is happening. So I'm terrified. This is honest truth. I hope you do something about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We got a question from Dennis Roberts.
Thanks, Henry, for mentioning this problem. It's new to me. I guess I've heard about this maybe in other communities, but I didn't realize we're having instances here in the city. When they're, when you see these, and you're saying they're following you, how, how high are they in the sky? Are they about another sixty feet above your head, or are they much higher than that? Are they close to the roof line of your home or your car?
Sometime they change their distance from, from the ground to the sky. I know one night I was going to my garage, and I was so terrified, I almost, you know, I just went berserk almost, and they looked like they were gonna come right into the garage. Door, you're with me, you know, is, but it's amazing, they just, I've been told that they also show up at night, during the daytime. But I just observe them at night, particularly if we got a beautiful night, you know? Very visible, you know? And I wish you all are welcome to come to my residence and see this for yourself, because I have shared this with some people, and they laughed and said that, you know, you know, you being paranoid. They make it comical, you know? But it's something that's really is going on. And as I say, you all is welcome to come to my house and ride in my car, and you'll see it for yourself. But like I say, the only thing stopping in their track, if I go out to Willa Airport, they stop for some reason, I don't know why.
It would be great if you gave then the clerk afterward, write down your address, so we could also help kind of pinpoint where this activity is taking place.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood are still concerned about the Ellis subdivision sewer problems, but do not wish to speak. Benjamin Stone?
Hello, my name is Benjamin Stone, I live at 701 Hawthorne Drive in Urbana. This is really fast. I just want to say thank you for even considering the lowering of marijuana fines. No matter how we look at it, it's a continuation of Urbana and its progressive approach to things like marijuana. I could, I, you'll hear from me again with more information, but like current open container fines being $150, I mean, even that's steep. But a higher fine on marijuana affects a lot of people disproportionately, in ways that, you know, I don't have the expertise, the knowledge, the statistics to back up. But it's more than just, it's more than just people wanting to pay less for a fine. It's also, who is the fine adversely affecting? Who is it affecting more? And I can say for certainty, I have read the numbers, and it's not affecting people with the skin color, by any stretch of the imagination, as it is for people who are perhaps a little darker than me. And I want to thank you guys just for even, are you gonna do $5? No. I love you guys, but I know you're not going to. But the fact you're even willing to consider this, it makes me happy to live in this town. So I just wanted to say thanks.
You're welcome, thank you. Eric Jacobson?
Maybe you know, New Orleans just went down to $40.
Yes, they have, they have a scaled system, which is, honestly, I think their system would be perfect in Urbana.
So who knows, maybe, maybe we could be as progressive as Louisiana.
I, I never thought I'd hear those words. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Dan Lynn?
Well, thank you. I too hear him to talk about the cannabis ordinance violation, I was hoping that the report would be here. I do have some statistics from a report by the Roosevelt University and Illinois Consortium on Drug Policy, and it really does kind of highlight what I find to be a troubling racial disparity in who is being issued these civil ordinance violations versus who is being arrested. And according to this report, the 2010 U.S. Census Bureau has Urbana at 58% white and 16% black, yet the arrests for low-level cannabis possession were 57% black to 40% white. And other studies show that usage of cannabis is equal across the board among the races, at somewhere between 12 and 13%. And then if we look at your neighbor, Champaign, they don't have the racial breakdown, but they at least have a breakdown of the arrests versus the tickets. And in Champaign, they're looking at about 74% of violators being issued a ticket to the 26% who are being arrested. And I think that this just kind of plays into the narrative, and the intent is to not saddle low-level cannabis offenders with an arrest record, which will then follow them the rest of their life, and it is difficult to expunge it. And even if you do expunge it, it still can prevent you from gaining certain access to housing, or in certain job requirements or background checks. Another thing that I think is worth noting that is if you're gonna make cannabis offenses a lowest law enforcement priority, you can look at the city of Denver as a great example of being a progressive city in what they did, where they removed all criminal penalties for cannabis in 2007. Subsequently, the state did legalize cannabis for all adults in 2012. And now the past few years, Denver has been rated as one of the best cities to live in in this country. So in terms of equality of life, I definitely think that lowering or even removing these low-level cannabis possessions actually plays into that narrative and improves the quality of life, and also improves home property values. So I think that those are all things that should be considered when addressing the lowering of the fines, or how you want to treat low-level cannabis violations. There is legislation in Springfield that I'm helping to work on, so that there would be a uniform enforcement across the state for these type of low-level violations. There's over 100 municipalities in Illinois that have these decriminalized ordinances and tickets, ranging anywhere from up to two and a half grams of cannabis to up to 30 grams of cannabis, with varying fines. The highest fine that I'm aware of is in Aurora, where up to 30 grams of cannabis can get you a $1,500 fine. And if the intent is to prevent people from being arrested and having that arrest on their record, a fine of $1,500 is probably not gonna be able to be paid, you're not gonna have that compliance, and arrest warrant is gonna be issued, and you've now circumvented the intent of preventing these people from gaining an arrest record. So like the previous speaker, I do commend the city of Urbana for considering this. I hope you do move forward with it. I would like to be considered a resource if you need more information about this. I'm waiting for the city attorney to present this report next week, so I will be here next week. And I'm willing to take any questions or offer this report to the committee for circulation, along with another one from the Human Rights Watch, which was 2003 report that said that Illinois had the worst racial disparities for drug violations in the entire country.
Okay, thank you. Diane?
Are you, do you have an organization that you're representing?
Yeah, the Illinois Chapter of NORMAL, which is the National Organization to Reform Marijuana Laws. And I'm a volunteer with them, I do not get any type of paid compensation from them.
Eric, and then Bill?
Can, can you electronically send the reports to the clerk for distribution to the rest of us?
Oh, yeah, I prefer that, it's a 53-page report, that's a lot of trees we could save.
Yes, much, much better.
Bill?
Yeah, just so you know, I think it was 2004 that Urbana First Institute, the $300 fine for an ounce or less, or 30 grams, I guess. And it has prevented a lot of arrests and incarcerations, I think. And so that's the goal, is to make sure that that continues, and we don't get people involved with the court system anymore than we have to. I was wondering if you knew if there's a reliable field test for DUI with marijuana intoxication yet? Is there something like that?
There's nothing that is as standardized as like the .08 breathalyzer test, which is a easy threshold for prosecutors to then charge somebody and successfully convict someone, either you're below .08 or you're above .08. The problem with cannabis and DUI, DUID is specifically to cannabis driving under the influence of drugs, is that, one, cannabis is fat soluble, so it stays in the fat cells of the body. So somebody like myself that has a higher body fat content will store cannabis and the cannabinoids in our, in my body much longer than somebody who has a lower body fat content. But if we're talking about how long cannabis stays in the system, it can be anywhere from two to three weeks after somebody has consumed, that you're still gonna test positive for cannabis. My professional opinion is that you can modify the standardized field sobriety test to accurately assess whether somebody's motor vehicle skills are impaired by cannabis. I think that the state is moving forward with that decriminalization law that would have an improved DUID law for our state, because currently we have a zero tolerance per se limit, which is 0.0 threshold. So any of us could go to Colorado this weekend, consume cannabis legally in Colorado, come back to Urbana, be involved in an automobile accident, still test positive for cannabis, and be convicted of, in some cases, an aggravated DUID. We have seen instances of people in Illinois who have been convicted of that aggravated DUID long after they consumed cannabis, and there would have been any impairment of their judgment or motor vehicle skills from the cannabis. Those specific instances, I would say that the prosecutor did not use their discretion in going after those individuals. But that is also part of the reason that the State's Attorneys Association has been heavily involved in drafting that legislation in Springfield.
I would correct the record, Bill. That passed in 2007, 2008.
The study in front of me says 2008.
Yeah, because I know it was Chief Bealy, it was our police department, earlier, the previous police chief, and it was to get a lower Chief Adair, to get, to avoid the state penalty. So we've, we've done that many years ago, and we're looking at the, the fine now. Eric?
Is there a threshold for DUID, a cannabinoid level for DUID, that, for which there's a scientific basis and could be written into legislation?
Even the thresholds that have been proposed, I don't think that they correlate to impairment. It's just a presence of the substance and a certain level of the presence of the substance. If we're talking impairment of cannabis, and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has a report out that kind of suggests this, that the biggest variable with driving under the influence of cannabis and impairment is not necessarily how much cannabis somebody consumed, not necessarily how recently they consumed cannabis, but it's much more dependent on how familiar are they with consuming cannabis, and then driving afterwards. People that are habitual users of cannabis and frequently drive somewhat afterwards are probably not gonna be as big of a threat as that new driver or young driver who has never consumed cannabis before, and then chooses to get behind the wheel of a car shortly after consuming the substance.
So if, if I could just do a follow-up to that, I think that all of us who are in favor of reducing the amount of the fine, as I am, and even actually, as I am, would ultimately favor legalization, as, as is the case in Washington and Colorado, I guess I should do some more research about Washington and Colorado, because we are concerned about DUI. You know, we are concerned about, that we can safeguard against that, that we don't do away with that. So any information that you could provide about that would be very helpful.
And let me echo those sentiments. As an advocate for legalizing and taxing and regulating the adult cannabis market, I still want to maintain safe roads. I want to make sure that this is not gonna be an endangerment to public safety. If we look at where the state legislation is likely going right now, it is mimicking Colorado's law of five nanograms of THC per milliliter of blood. I believe the most recent amendment is now five nanograms for the milliliter of blood, 15 nanograms per milliliter of other bodily substance. There are some devices being developed in the private sector that would do a saliva swab, to see what levels of THC can be found in those other bodily fluids. But there definitely isn't the science nor the devices yet on the market, like that we have with the breathalyzer. And even if we look historically at the BAC levels that we've tolerated for driving under the influence of alcohol, they have gone down over the years. So even if we set it at a certain threshold of five nanograms per milliliter of blood, that number could fluctuate up or down depending on what the data suggests moving down the road. I think that the likelihood of the legislation in Springfield passing is very significant, because not only did we pass this legislation last year, and the governor mandatorily vetoed it, the new legislation has adopted the governor's mandatory veto language, so in theory, we should not have any resistance from his office, once when that legislation gets to his desk. But I'd be happy to send further studies regarding this issue about driving under the influence, as well as the racial disparities, as well as the benefits of making the low-level cannabis violations the lowest law enforcement priority.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a request from Matt Riggs, but you will be at the next meeting, which is the Committee of the Whole, okay? is the committee of the whole, okay? Is there someone else who wants to talk today? Okay. Okay, Melinda Carr, did you want to talk now or what? Okay, come on up.
Good evening, mayor pressing and all the council members. My name is Eldris Melinda Carr and I am a resident in Urbana now, 1308 West Tremont. And I wanted to say a few things. You've seen me coming now and I'm going to be coming in the future. And I moved in Urbana on assignment from the Lord, I'll just say that. And I wanted to, February was Black History Month and I wanted to read a passage from the writings of the Reverend, the Reverend Dr. Monmouth the King Jr. to you tonight in addition to my comments. And this reading is from the letter from the Birmingham Jail. And it says, "There was a time when the church was a very powerful, was very powerful. It was during that period when the early Christians rejoiced when they were deemed worthy to suffer for what they believed. In those days, the church was not merely a thermometer that recorded the ideas and principles of popular opinion, it was a thermostat that transformed the mores of society. Whenever the early Christians entered a town, the power structure got disturbed and immediately sought to convict, to convict them for being quote disturbers of the peace unquote and quote outside agitators unquote. But they went on with the conviction that they were quote a colony of heaven unquote and had, and had to obey God rather than man. They were small in number, but, but big in commitment." And I'm going to stop there. And I'm saying that to say that all the prophets, of which Reverend Dr. Monmouth the King was one, and people today who are standing for beliefs and values to, not just for self, but for other members of the community, we have to continue to do that. And I wanted to mention Pastor Underwood and Reverend Dr. Underwood, who have been coming for several months regarding the sewer issue in Ellis, the Ellis, Dr. Ellis subdivision. And now that I'm living there, I won't have time to tell my story, but I will be telling it in the future. But I just want to thank them for their commitment and carrying on the, the dream and the miracles that have been wrought, of which I don't have time to go through them tonight, but the future things that will happen. And I pray that the council will look at the historical impact, and that's what I said in the, the sheet, historical impact. There's some things that the city has done and we appreciate the things that have been done so far, but there's a historical impact that has been, still been going on with the community and people are experiencing things because of the historical impact and there's a breach that must be corrected. So, that's the end of my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, unfinished business? I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with tonight. So, reports of standing committees, committee of the whole? Mike Madigan?
Okay, committee of the whole agenda. Agenda item number A, ordinance number 2016-03-017, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015, 2016 annual budget regarding the Meyer Development Agreement. The committee of the whole recommended to the city council do adopt and on the, on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing.
Yes, that motion carries.
Ordinance number 2016-03-018, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate property by eminent domain for the extension of North Lincoln Avenue from Saline Court to Olympian Drive. Acquisition of right-of-way for constructing North Lincoln Avenue extension. The committee of the whole recommended do adopt and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing.
Yes, that motion carries.
Ordinance number 2016-03-019, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, a portion of real estate parcel with permanent index number 25-15-29-300-004. The committee of the whole recommended approval and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing.
Yes, that motion carries.
Resolution number 2016-03-011R, a resolution approving local agency agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation. It's the Lincoln Avenue construction from Olympian Drive to Saline Court, section number The committee of the whole recommended approval and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Resolution number 2016-03-016R, a resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, North Lincoln Avenue Improvements, Construction, Engineering, and Utilities. Committee of the whole recommended approval and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
I congratulate Diane for getting in there. Very good.
Mr. Smythe?
And I said yes.
That motion carries.
Resolution number 2016-03-012R, a resolution approving an amendment to a subrecipient agreement between the Urbana Home Consortium and Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County, fiscal year 2014, 2015. Committee of the whole recommended approval and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
State law precludes me from participation in the next agenda item and therefore I'll shall recuse myself and ask Diane Marlin to take the chair.
Okay. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2016-03-020, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for U.M. Incorporated doing business as Mr. Gas Plus, 808 East Main Street.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2016-02-014, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Article 3, Section 3-40, and adding new Section 3-51, providing for compliance with new state statute concerning responsible alcoholic beverage server training.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Mr. Brown?
Just to make sure I'm clear on what we're voting on, according to this ordinance, we would not accept training done online. Is that right?
No, I don't think that's right.
It says-
People have a choice.
It defines certificate as a card or other written evidence issued by a person who is licensed or certified by the state of Illinois to offer a training program and issue such certificates. So, I'm not, it's not clear to me that it includes-
Well, I think the state, the online thing, the person that is authorized. Did you want to say something, Diane?
I believe the online training is certified as well.
I'm just, I guess I question whether it's a person issued by a person.
There's some person that worked on it. I, I mean, there's, the state has jurisdiction to issue.
I think we could clarify that better.
Okay, well, if you want to pass it, then we'll ask the attorney and if we have to correct it, we'll correct it. How about that?
Um.
I don't think there's an issue with it, but go ahead. Mr. Jacobson?
Well, I think that's an interesting issue that Bill presents because it's certified by a computer program rather than a person. And I wonder if there would be a quick, a mandatory fix to say, issued by a person or through a certified, a state-certified, online program.
If that's an amendment, I would second that. And then, if it needs to be clarified by the attorney, he could do that afterwards.
Okay.
I'd accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, it's amended with the phrase, you'll have to write it out for the clerk. Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Is it okay with the seconder? Would the clerk please call the roll? Did you want to say something else?
No, 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 no. I was just gesturing agreement with everything.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll return the chair to Mr. Madigan.
Okay, and I don't think I'm violating state law by pointing out that behind every website are real people. So, yeah, they, they are, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm-
No, that, that, no, that's, that's, that's a very good point.
But the state certifies the, the online services that provide the service. Agenda item number I, resolution number 2016-03-03013R, resolution, resolution to support, I can hardly get this out, I'm sorry, a resolution to support reform of binding arbitration in Illinois.
I would like to say I've submitted a simplified version of it, just three points.
Dennis?
Yeah, and I appreciate that. It actually clarified, I think, what was kind of like a lack of focus and it's much stronger and I would second that resolution.
Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Agenda item J is resolution number 2016-03-014R, resolution in support of funding for higher education in Illinois. The committee recommended approval and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any additions, or any questions, rather? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Agenda item K-
That motion carries, sorry.
Sorry. Agenda item K, resolution number 2016-03-015R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding intervention in a proposed Illinois American Water Company and Sewer Rate Increase Case, docket number 16-0093. The committee of the whole recommended approval and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
I'll second that one.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Madigan. Reports of special committees? Any reports of special committees? Reports of officers? Brandon Boyes? Economic Development?
Good evening. I placed on all the council members' desks a brochure of the new Think Urbana program. Think Urbana is the branding that we've created for the residential component of the new Urbana Enterprise Zone. And of course, this program wouldn't be possible without partnership with Champaign County, the Urbana School District, the Urbana Park District, CUMTD, and the Cunningham Township. So, this was our first step in really trying to get the word out. This branding, this investment in creating this branding is intended to serve a program that will hopefully be around for a minimum of 15 years. We conducted a press event last week. There was a press release as well, sent out emails to about 500 realty professionals in the area and have seen some coverage in the local media. We're starting to get calls now from folks who are interested in building homes, realtors, residential developers, and builders themselves. The program is primarily residential property tax abatement and sales tax exemptions for new residential construction. That includes single-family, two-family, as well as townhomes or other zero, zero lot line homes. The program will save a property owner up to 60% of their new property taxes as a result of that new construction. That's spread out over a five-year period and they also won't have to pay sales tax on the new construction materials that are purchased in the state of Illinois. So, $150,000 home, which is roughly the median of what home values are in the area. The savings for such a home would be on the order of over $8,000 in savings for the sales tax for the new construction materials and close to $16,000 in property tax savings over five years. I should note that that's based on the, I think, 10.6% property tax rate, which is the current rate, but there may be factors that allow that rate to go down. In addition to the Carl ruling, there's also the fact that the school district is planning to retire debt in 2018. In addition, Champaign Berry Mount very well may approve higher taxes in order to achieve an outcome for their high school. So, there's reason to believe that we will see equalization in addition to our efforts to increase the property tax base in Urbana. The website where the new branding can be found is thinkurbana.com. It's just a simple splash page, a landing page for folks to find this program. You can sign up for the email list on this page and we've made all of the promotion materials available as well, including, you know, full sets of the logos because the intent is that this isn't just Urbana, the city's program. This is also a program for the park district and the school district to promote, to promote their, their participation in the program as well. And we really achieve that participation with the school district and the park district because of that shared goal of having more residents in Urbana, more users of our parks, et cetera. So, anyone who's interested, any realtor, any lender who's interested in making use of these will be able to do so. And later this week, we'll have yard signs available for builders and also realtor signs available to add to any realty sign in, in the market that's in the enterprise zone. On April 12th, we'll have our annual Realtor Bus Tour, so Think Urbana will be a big feature of that, but also just showing off our great schools and parks and other amenities in addition to the subdivisions that are currently under construction. And there will be a advertising campaign rolling out starting in April and that will go for several months. And that's really our big push to really make sure that everyone in the community is well aware of the program. Any questions about Think Urbana? And I'll go on to the rest of the report.
Questions? Questions? I'm Mike Madigan.
So, Brandon, I appreciate all the work on this, and I'm supportive of the program, and I truly believe that broadening the tax base as opposed to increasing rates is the way we're going to grow Urbana. I just have one minor concern about the brochure you passed out.
Sure.
The photo of the housing on the inside of the brochure, is that Crystal View?
I believe so, yes.
Is that subsidized housing?
That project may have been, but it has a nice appearance, and-
Right.
A planned unit development may still qualify for this program if the style of development is single-family, duplex, or townhomes.
Do you think maybe we're looking more toward, you know, homes that are Myra Ridge type of thing, or Stone Creek, and, I don't know, I just, it just seems to me that the visual is not maybe the most marketable visual for the brochure, just a thought. And maybe what we could do is, on the web, you could do multiple pictures of different possibilities.
Certainly.
You know, just for people to have a little, a little better idea of the range of types of housing that Urbana offers, and the possibilities that we have here.
Thank you.
But overall, great job, and I'm very supportive.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Brandon.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to the rest of the Business and Development Report, which was included in your packet. Again, we continue to make changes to the style of the report, so if you have any feedback, please let us know. Libby Horwitz, our Economic Development Specialist, compiled this, not in the report, but of note, the 200 South Vine proposed redevelopment. We have a tentative date for the initial development announcement by TWG, that's tentatively going to be April 26th, so we wanted to let you know that it's on the horizon, and we'll have more information forthcoming, and also an official announcement of the meeting date and time.
Repeat that again, I think I missed the very first thing you said, that TWG was, what, going to have a meeting here?
We have a tentative date to have the first announcement of the development on April 26th, and that would also be the meeting for public input on design as well.
Because there'll be a sketch or something to look at, or ground plan?
Yes, it's really up to TWG in terms of what they are willing to present at that time, but we'll have certainly more information as we get closer to the date.
Eric?
I'm sorry. So, the, I guess I've been super cautious since we were told about this project in closed session, but you've mentioned the word TWG in an open meeting, so we can tell anybody who wants to know who the developer is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah, they were publicly selected, and, yeah, I've spoken in open session, so.
I'm just getting old.
Okay, moving on, soccer plan, in addition to the approval of the development agreement, which has now been executed, there's also been plans submitted, so that progress, that project is moving forward quickly. We had a good developer's luncheon this spring with many, many folks from the residential community, actually, who were looking to learn more about Think Urbana, even though we hadn't revealed the branding yet at that time. There's some pretty exciting business updates, both of these were our successfully funded Kickstarter campaigns, the first there is Tovala. This is a project, it's a high-tech kind of oven that does a variety of things and can cook meals in a very sophisticated way. It was developed at the product manufactory in Urbana, and at the time of this writing, they had already exceeded their goal of raising $100,000 online, but there was 21 days left. I actually didn't check before this report, but I expect that they're doing quite well. So, we have a great new startup right in Urbana. In addition, we have the Revival Games, which is headed by Mike Koulas, and also a member of the team is Luke Schneider of Radiant Games, who previously was working in County Plaza, so that group successfully raised $300,000 online and are now able to move forward with their video game development, hopefully in downtown Urbana for the duration of the development of the game. At 129 North Race, which is subject to a development agreement, there have been plans submitted, and I think perhaps they're very near approval if they haven't been already. Cherry Tree Cafe is the first business that'll go into 129 North Race.
Yeah, can I ask about that?
So?
So, I saw that the facade was removed, and so what's the plan for that?
I actually am not unaware of that, I'm sorry. I wasn't involved in the design review, so.
Yeah.
The, I also wanted to point out that construction was underway for Grigs beer distribution out on High Cross Road, so the first major business addition to southeast Urbana in a while. I think they're on your agenda a little later as well. The housing market for sales continues to be strong. Champaign County Association of Realtors reported a 37% increase over February of 2015, so that's good, it also reinforces what we're trying to do with Build Urbana. Hopefully, that means there's also going to be a strong market for new home construction. And lastly, I wanted to make sure council was aware that Urbana celebrates the Boneyard, the public arts program now has an annual event as part of the Boneyard Arts Festival in the Boneyard Creek Improvement Area at the corner of Race and Griggs. This year's event will feature, it's on Saturday, April 9th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and of course, there's many other things going on in downtown Urbana on that day of the Boneyard Arts Festival. There'll be live music by De Sa Finado, which is a variety of music, but popular Brazilian music, in addition to samba and bossa nova. The Capoeira Angola Center, which is based in our downtown, will also perform. And then there will be new art on display from Urbana School District students on the banners surrounding the park area, and if you saw it last year, it can't help but make you smile, Joyful Bubbles will be doing a demo as well. So, last year, we had African drumming and kids playing with giant bubbles, and it was a really good time. So, hopefully, we'll have good weather, and of course, there'll be food trucks again as well. I'm going to pass around this poster that was made, and I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other reports of officers? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Ordinance number 2016-03-021, an ordinance to allow a front canopy that will encroach seven feet into the required front yard in the city's B1 Neighborhood Business District at 303 West Griggs Street.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
So, the property in question is just about a block from where the Boneyard Festival will be on April 9th. At 303 West Griggs is an existing commercial building, previously has received a conditional use permit in order to operate a mail-order business. Most recently, they received a parking variance to reduce the parking on-site in order to allow retail use at that site. The next phase of the project is for the owner to renovate the building on the outside. The thing is with this building is that it was constructed prior to zoning regulations at this location, so it was built what is now four feet into the front yard setback. So, to put anything on the front of the building would require a variance. The owner would like to put on a three-foot-deep by six-foot-wide canopy over the front door, so that would further encroach and therefore requires that major variance, that's why we're here today. The zoning board considered the item at their March 16th meeting. They found that the variance criteria had been met, including that it would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area, and is the minimum deviation necessary. They did vote unanimously to recommend approval with one condition, that being that the canopy shall be built in general conformance with the plans provided by the applicant in Exhibit E. Staff concurs with that recommendation.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, I went and I looked at the building today. The improvements that they suggest seem to be fine. I noticed that there were canopies across the street on the apartment building, and also at the store that's at, on the block farther east, which is the little African store, African food store. I was looking at the, I have two questions. The canopy, is it going to be in a style that's going to be rather like the canopy that's now over the, replace the marquee at the Virginia Theater, that it's going to be like a flat canopy that sticks out, rather than like a triangular canopy? I couldn't quite tell from the-
Let me see if I can pull that exact page up.
Yeah, it's so minute, it's sort of hard to tell exactly what they're doing.
The idea is that it would be a steel canopy, basically horizontal, and then braced with a steel cable, I would imagine.
Right.
I wish I could-
So, like an entrance porch roof, kind of thing?
Yes, yes, so, pretty minimal, 18 square feet, enough to keep the weather from those entering the business, but not really taking up that much space.
And are they going to remove the, the communication tower that's on the front, or is that, have they indicated what they're going to do with that?
I do not know about the communications tower.
It's, when you have a ham, a ham operating?
They're doing a lot of improvements to the site, and I apologize, the owner couldn't make it here tonight, but I don't recall seeing that still listed on the site plan, where they're doing some significant work, such as removing the old curb cut and the pavement that's in the right-of-way. So, I can confirm that, but-
Are they, are they going to resurface the facade, or will it just merely be cleaned or presented? Right now, it's a brick facade.
Right, well, let's see, it was characterized as rebuild the front facade, and what is, for instance, there's overhead doors, those would be removed, pedestrian door would be put in with windows, and the description here is stone band, just keep a stone band on the top, and then, I don't see a lot of detail on that, since the variance was just for the canopy, I don't see a lot of detail on the architectural facade, but it will remove those overhead doors, put in, as I said, windows and a pedestrian door, and remove a lot of the pavement that's on the site.
I think I'm happy, all right, thanks.
It will look better than it does today, I can tell you that.
Any other questions for Lori? Is there a motion?
I move approval of ordinance number 2016-03-021.
Second.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Jacobson, any other discussion? Would the clerk please read or call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you very much. Next, we have the appointments to boards and commissions, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Annie Adams and Lily Wilcock, public arts. Go ahead, did somebody say something?
I was just going to do them in by section.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Move approval of the two for bicycle and pedestrian.
Okay.
Second. They're good enough for Charlie, they're good enough for me.
Okay, we have motion for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is the Public Arts Commission, Sarah Jones.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Jacobson, seconded by Smythe, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And finally, Market at the Square Advisory Board, Brian Curran?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.